Okay. Okay, City of Taft Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, here at City Hall, two oh nine East Kern Street. City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are being livestreamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot coms forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off to the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at Ymayfield at Cityoftaft.org, made by phone to the City of Taft's city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. And I'll go ahead and lead the pledge.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And here to lead us in invocation is Pastor Joey Pittman.
Let's go ahead and pray. God, we read in Scripture how men of old have always sought your guidance, your wisdom. God, we just pray that for this session and for our city, God, that you guide and lead us with wisdom and knowledge. We thank you, God, and we call upon you for that strength and help. We give you all the thanks and praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, let's have the roll call.
Chairman Orin is absent. Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And Commissioner Lykem is absent.
Okay, I see citizens' request for public comment period, and at this point, we have no public comments signed in. So we'll move to item two, the minutes of the meeting. We'll need a motion in a second.
Hold motion.
I'm gonna get a second.
Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. Okay, and it is approved on a three oh vote with two absences. Move to item three, which is the study session on the downtown Taft specific plan and zoning ordinance amendment to accelerate housing product production project. This is an information-only item. It'll be led by our Director of Planning, Mark Staples. Mark?
Thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. As we've done throughout the past almost year now, I keep bringing back each update as I can to keep us all informed and especially the public that's able to attend in person or view this on YouTube. So the latest workshop that we held for the downtown Taft specific plan was on Thursday, March thirty-first, not too long ago, but it was still kind of close to our April meeting, so I didn't really have anything prepared then. But what I'm going over today is the key item that we reviewed in that meeting was this urban design element worksheet. There was ten panels of images and graphics of what we went over, and there's a questionnaire here that I'll go over. So they're broken up into ten sections, and I'll move over to the graphics. But the questions here, let me get to the right page so I can keep us on track. So we had the ten sections, and we started with parks, plaza, and open space, and then went right into residential multifamily development. And we did do a preface where we went over what we went over in workshops one and two and how we got to this point. I think some of the land uses were pretty much agreed upon. The goals and purposes of the project were all kind of settled. So we were trying to get into some of the details to see what folks were looking for. So in parks, plaza, and open space, we tried to provide a variety of outdoor spaces from your playgrounds to terraced amphitheaters to what's happened during the pandemic with a lot more outdoor seating, either in creating or reimagining some pocket plaza areas where people could sit and eat at a restaurant when everything had to move outside. Unique natural play areas where it integrates drainage and a playground or seating area, traditional playgrounds, plazas, and a shopping center and the like. So on the questions on this, we always had these options of which ones you like, don't like, or what more just fits, whether it's something you like or don't like, and what areas of downtown do you like to see. Which one of these are, or a couple of these are needed in the downtown area. And one thing that was shown was a site plan of potential housing along the trail and even one block off. So immediately across Supply Row, they laid out about a hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty unit multifamily projects so that anybody who needs to use transit, the transit center's right there. And then down at Fourth and Supply Row, they showed a, what the scale would look like for a three-story condominium project right on the trailway. And so along there, we introduced more of a playground space that was tying the trail to the residential space area. So a project like a multifamily project would have some sort of amenity, open space or whatever within the private property area, and usually it is a playground, a swimming pool, or some other outdoor space. But we got into a little bit of whether or not to have some in, you know, there's some pretty wide open areas of lawn on our trail. So we kind of dove into that, and we took everybody's comment on that. We do have the entire workshop recorded, so everybody can go to the website to hear the details of all this. So of this open space area, since I know Vice Chair, two of our, the three of you were there in attendance, Vice Chair Livingston and Commissioner Johnson, if you want to share any comments you had or observed there, and then Commissioner Dowden, as we go through each section, go ahead and share your comments or thoughts or things you agreed with or not for those that were in attendance. Was there anything in particular that you focused on when we were going through this at the workshop?
I just thought that the comments, first of all, were very productive from members of the community. And given that we're going to get some of the final opportunities to comment when the plan gets to us, it's, I'm looking for more people to comment. So people out in the public, if they hear this, they should get out there right now and get on the webpage and make those, take those opportunities. It's important to have public spaces.
Right.
And this is the opportunity right now to take advantage of a blank slate.
These are the spaces in between.
Right.
The uses or the road to the building, the park space between Napa and the Best Western. You know, sometimes we can't take it for granted because we grew up on a playground at our school or parks we played at all the time, or even a little extra greenery along a side yard of a residential area sometimes can serve as some of these kind of passive open space areas. And it's always nice to see how different areas can creatively open these up and make it available for most people, and especially in a kind of busy area like our downtown is when it is busy for special events and parades, and then just when people are out and about on a first Friday.
And I absolutely, taking advantage of a blank slate as it is right now is really important. So, yes, I think they've done a good job.
And we're talking specifically inside the private property that someone might develop?
Well, that's what the conversation road went down. There are some basic standards for, for so many units, or per unit, two hundred square feet, five hundred square feet of open space. We're trying to figure out how to create a ratio for the intensity of development, providing a landscape area. Out at Sandy Creek Estates, we allowed some of that frontage road that's along the trail out there to kind of cut into the trail space a little bit. So that was one little thing where we did discuss, you know, part of maybe an amenity to get more units, or if they're going to provide a portion of them to be affordable and for them to balance their sheet for affordability on their end to build it and then get rents. There's probably going to be some asking, okay, well, you have this public space. What we can, can we do there? And that gives all of us some flexibility, or they provide additional amenity beyond what's required on the property in some of those areas along the trail. Because the second to fourth area and the sixth to tenth has the trail, some trees, but not much else. Whereas between fourth and sixth, where the transit center is, you have the bulletin board. You have the derrick that's somewhat like a kind of a small, not quite sculpture, but miniature version of a derrick. So that's one thing about these open spaces. You can figure out what works and what you can insert in there to make it an active space and not just unused and.
Yeah.
And in some cases, especially with multifamily, you can take advantage of the open space to expand some of the opportunities for play and other things that you might not get elsewhere.
I just think on some of those lots, I mean, they look big, but once you start building, you have parking, and you're trying to get as many houses as you can to make it, or we can get as many houses as we can, but, and make it affordable. It's going to limit the amount of space we can allocate. So I agree, like, perfect world, if we had a huge, hundreds of acres, you could do a lot more, but some of those lots are, what, five, ten acres?
Or less, yeah.
Or less, and very limited on space.
You'll see in some other areas where the title here might have a different topic title to it, but you'll see different areas of public space being associated to the multifamily residential or street furniture as we get in, the, we're going to get into some public art and some other categories. And you'll see similar public areas where some of that can overlap, in a sense. That's where a lot of these areas work, where you're not putting it all on one property, but you're also, like you're saying, trying to get more units out of it and whatnot. So there is a push and pull, give and take. And that is one thing they're looking at is, are parking standards a little too much? But we also don't want to get rid of them all and create the whole on-street parking nightmare that some places can have. So that is what they're looking at and trying to balance those two and get those ratios to work out.
And actually, even if it's a small area, just my experience growing up here in Taft, aside from playing football here in the park where all the trees are now, we played football on the side yard of a large house. It was a nice, long, grassy area. It made a perfect place to play a little bit of football for young kids. You know, that kind of thing still exists if you, if you plan right in a system like this, so.
If we're, and if we're talking specifically along the walking path, it's kind of one of the advantages to building there is because you can utilize that as, yeah, it ain't our personal space, but it is space, park-like setting that we can incorporate. You know, have a nice locked gate that can go in and out, so it is private, but you have access to it easily.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one thing, somewhat in all the comments that we've received, and also my experience in working with various developments and then the project team as well, is to see if there can be that blending or at least the accesses there. So residents can use it. The development doesn't turn its back on the trail. So there's a, you know, overly harsh division between the two uses. People are using the trail, you know, waving to a neighbor that they're not necessarily next door to, but there's people they know at the development and vice versa. That's the key thing with all these urban design elements is opening it up, but still having the privacy, like you say. And, but still making sure there's connections there so you're not having to go all the way around a block to get to something as well, so. That's one thing we're integrating into the design standards.
Someone with kids are going to want a private area that's kind of enclosed, that they can't just go open up easily and go out. And we don't want just anyone coming in.
Right.
But it's a very limited space, so I think once the developers come to us with ideas, we're just going to have to kind of give our opinion. It's going to be hard to, there's so many scenarios on what they're going to come at.
Like you're saying, it depends on the builder, but both us and the panel of you, planning commissioners, can help mold and shape how each of these developments fit in to each of the pieces of land. Because we do, they're all unique pieces, so you can only make a template so far, and then they go the rest of the way with their unique design, for sure.
I agree, some, some area is nice and almost required.
I thought it was a great platform, and I really liked the examples, just the creative examples of what we could do here in Taft. I was surprised by some of them because I hadn't envisioned those types of features in Taft. Not that it was a wonderful meeting. I hope that more people attend the next one.
Definitely, one thing I'll do my best to do is every meeting, we're going to be covering something on this. I'll, when I wrap things up, after we're done discussing this item, I'll share some new idea of just recently come up with to get more creative input because a lot of this stuff doesn't affect the bulk of the document, which is more of the environmental processes and whether traffic counts or all that. You know, these are, how are we trying to get that look and feel of Taft and getting the housing we need and things like that? We could adjust these. I'll figure out what that last-minute date deadline is before we have to go to a public meeting. But to get more ideas, yes, no, on different design aspects and bulk and size and design of multifamily, as we're going to discuss in a second. But I want to get as much out of everybody throughout this year until we get to that final decision point. Speaking of the residential design, they pulled a lot of these examples from projects they've worked on in the past and other, both market rate and affordable units. I kind of interjected during the meeting real quick in that, and I'll just point them out without asking, but the blue one here and the blue and tans on the left are actually a project in Wasco. It is considered workforce housing for the Wasco area. They're not necessarily calling it out for the farm workers that are in that area with Wasco being surrounded by all the farms there. But it is, has a good variety of these two-unit buildings, and I think some three- and four-unit buildings, and it's right in the middle of some newer subdivision area on the north side of forty-six there in Wasco. And it's not just a, or you might have your opinion, but to me, it's not just a stuckle box like some past projects might have been. They did mix up the designs. You can see on the left, there is kind of a two-unit structure, and then one that kind of looks like a house with a front-loading garage. And it's a really unique project that pushes the density. I think they're in like the twelve to fifteen range with that, and most of it is two stories or smaller. And it's mid, around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty units up in that area. So it's blending in really well with the single-family subdivision up there, and so far, it's working well. And then the others are a mix of throughout California, some four-story units, two-story, and the only mixed use is in that upper-left one there that kind of has a contemporary, simpler design without being a distinctive architectural style or siding and things like that, so. Any comments, one way or the other, about what kind of density we're going for? I know we talked about it a lot from workshop two because we had those play cards that had how some of these things could fit in our narrow lots and some of the bigger lots. But these are some of the first images we've put out there just to elicit the response and get feedback on how we're feeling about multifamily residential development.
Anything we can get?
I was just going to say, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of the most density it can get as long as it looks, doesn't look like it's stacked, you know, one thing on top of the others. We've talked about, because the lower, the higher the density, the lower the price point can be. And if we're going to have some of this be affordable, and when I say affordable, I mean more than just low-income housing. I mean affordable to, say, younger people.
Starter, starting.
Starter homes, things like that. I think it's a good idea to, to have some more increased density. So I think a number of those looked very good in terms of de-use to the acre.
And somewhat moving it into the adaptive reuse side. We don't have a whole lot of this, but it does somewhat apply for our Center Street where you have some of that brick and pioneer mercantile-type businesses or structures that are there that have the ground floor business and either at offices or hotel or whatever it was in the upper floors. So we would more work within the four walls of what's given there. But we didn't spend too much time on this because we don't quite have a lot of these scale projects. We do have the one warehouse that's near the transit center that would fit the lower left for kind of going commercial to commercial in a unique way, something slightly more industrial, which we have with the old oil fields, and go into something like a landscape and interior design store for that example. In a way, we already did get that with our Fertile Earth store that reused, I think its prior use was an auto detailing shop right across from the DMV. So uses like that fitting into existing buildings you have, but it's, it seems to transform the interior or turn traditionally commercial industrial space into residential, which some of our downtown buildings can. It will just take some investment to make this happen. I think most people are for it. We just don't quite have some of these more unique buildings here. There's a few, but we did discuss this as well. If the three of you have any perspective on this, you've been here a lot longer than I have in Taft, so you might have a favorite building downtown that you could see something changing or transforming there?
Well, I'm in favor of preserving the facades of just about every of the older buildings downtown, and that's what this does.
Yes.
I honestly don't care too much about the interior. It can be as modern as you want it to be.
Yeah.
I just want the exterior to be preserved. So you're right, the, the, the old, you know, a good example is what Joyce Brothers did with the Mercantile Building. They've got that gorgeous apartment upstairs that you wouldn't even know was there, frankly.
Right.
And I think there's some other two stories that could be turned into some very nice, you know, workspace downstairs and upstairs into residential. So what we can, whatever we can do to encourage that. I know that there's earthquake-related stuff and other stuff that needs to be done, but as long as we preserve the facade, especially, you know, if it's mid-block, then really it's just the front of the building that matters. You know, some of the ones with the buildings on the side, the old bank building across from, I guess Zaffers was one of the last people to be in it. I can't remember the, the actual, it's on Third. The O'Brien Building across the street, the white one. I think all of those have great potential for, they just need to be preserved on the exterior. So I think this is a good example of that.
I'd like to see them preserved as much as possible. Realistically, though, there's some, and they've been sitting for years, and I think it's because they need so much work, the, the investment, to try to bring them up to code or taking the liability of it. They're just old and got their issues, so it's up to someone if they can even feasibly do it. A lot of them, I know people have looked at, and they haven't taken on that project, and they've been sitting for years.
Right.
Which is sad, they're a nice-looking building, but we know they need a lot of work. The roofs have been leaking for years.
Lots of preservation side, fixing it up, getting it to a new working.
I would say if they come, if we get a good developer, it's like, hey, we just need to maybe demo it and start over, then it's definitely something we've got to consider. As much as we'd like to keep them, some just aren't maybe feasible. That's just, they've been sitting so long, something, something may make some sense to.
I'm certainly open to having to do that, but then at that point, you still need to preserve the character of the downtown. And I think that we'd still need to address what they look like anyways.
Absolutely.
So.
So from there, we moved on to streetscape. This is what I was mentioning, where we were looking at the open space stuff. It's more, we all vision it this way, where it's the wide-open green spaces, but you can have some of that in very small instances with your streetscape furniture, where it's just static, or it's part of a restaurant or other use where it's all outside, historic clocks or other historic features in the downtown, marked-up crosswalks, paved with a different surface type crosswalks and all that. These are other little detail things that make up the downtowns you tend to remember. So I think we've all seen the evolution of Center Street here, and then also some of the other small towns up and down the valley or even the coast, where you see these little incremental adjustments that make that place just that much more special or unique. So we discussed this a lot. I think everybody was on board with each of these, and they saw how even some of these pictures are exactly the same spot. This is from one angle, and that's the other direction of the same black seating like we have with a lot of the Old Dorado benches in our city. So how do you guys feel about these items here or?
I heard a number of people saying that they wanted to see the, the work that was done on the four hundred, the five hundred block. You know, you've got the bump outs. The street art, in essence, you call it street art, but it's the old oil field equipment. Try to expand that up and down, the flower beds, things like that, or especially of interest to a number of people on Center Street, sort of continue to preserve that.
And that's what you have here. It's a little tough to see if you had like a singular image for one of these. These are the same project here where the crosswalks start. We have a little bit of it with the planners popping out a little bit, narrowing the distance of the crosswalk. These are even closer. These are about barely wide enough for just the two lanes, so it's probably another two to five feet on each side compared to our planner. So that's where they're creating the extra space to have the benches here because it probably extends one more parking space compared to ours for that angled parking on Center Street. So expanding some of those areas to get a first bench and a second bench and some seating for restaurants, a lot of cities have taken some risks to take up, you know, street parking in other areas to try to get that outdoor seating. And sometimes the trade-off works, sometimes it doesn't. And so that was presented to the workshop group, and it's been an idea that I think we've been trying to grapple with with each improvement downtown. We've had some recent paving projects on Center Street and adjusting some of the crosswalks mid-block, so. Any other comments on this one?
I don't think parking's been much of an issue as of yet. There's plenty of backroads that you could park off of and just walk a block in and.
Yeah, in fact, we've got, what, one, two, three public slots, you know? You can park at, that's, you know, within a block or two of almost anything on downtown anyway, so.
Even during Old Dorado, parking wasn't much of a problem.
Right.
And that's our, kind of our busiest time ever, so.
I'd be okay even if we lost a few to some of those expanded. I'd be okay even if we lost a few to some of those expanded, uh, bumpouts.
Mm-hmm. And these paseos, greenways and alleys tie into that as well, whether it's parking lot to the business or to get out to the main road, um, or some of these are just through the residential areas, so you can have like a paseo or path, um, that cuts through the private project that connects rails and trails out to the sidewalk along, um, supply row or down to main for some of the lots that we have, there's zone appropriately for some residential. Um, and, uh, I think that was also the purpose of, uh, Sir Optimus Park, um, where you have the restroom. Um, it's a little bit of a drop-off, so I think they went with the retaining wall instead, but I think, uh, a design feature would have been connecting the parking lot at the post office and allowing people to zigzag up through that park to get to Center Street. So that's what a lot of these paseos do. And the upper-left is more of a unique architectural, um, situation with the arcade where it's the facade of the building goes out further and it, the second floor, not even overhang, just the, the ceiling of that provides the shade for the ground-level, um, commercial and the shade protection from the sun, given a, if you're in a hotter area, and along with the alley unique art piece cover that they put there, I don't recall what city that is, but. Um, so we went over these as well with the group, uh, we got good feedback on that, I think most people were wanting something unique in our area that can provide these unique transitions between, uh, block to block or development to development, um, in the downtown area and anything new that comes in along rows and trails. Um, I think we preemptively talked about this with the facades, is, you know, I think we all love the architecture that we do have down on Center Street and wanna preserve it as much as we can, do the structural retrofits that are needed, but keep the, uh, facades as we can, and then anything new fits in. But you also want some, um, eclecticness between the designs, um, so allowance for some of the stucco or siding or tile work. Um, one of the big ones that we didn't get into much is, um, um, there is a lot of value in making sure people can see into your business and then when you're in the business being able to see out. Don't even need to go down the road of, uh, you know, emergency services, being able to see a situation inside and all that. But there's something about the inside-outside, working together, especially in quaint downtowns like ours and all the other small cities that we've all been to up and down the valley and the coast. Um, the recessed defined entrances, you have those, uh, essentially display case-type, uh, windows on either side with the couple businesses we have where the, um, entry is actually ten feet in and you have probably the old, uh, product when it was the, the shoe stores and all the clothing stores that used to be downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And it's still preserved somewhat here, this is obviously Casey Photography down on the bottom left. Um, all their displays for the different, uh, images they have for the Taft area. So they hit some of these, uh, key design elements, um. Uh, I think we were seeing more of the scale and how it worked with the one stories next to each other, um, in the discussion we had at the actual workshop. And we didn't get too much into the details of the design elements, but is there any particular feature we're a fan of or not so much with this, or? Um, I think part of the preservation side would be keeping the brick as much as possible, even though covering with stucco is an easy maintenance fix, but I think we wanna avoid that as much as we can unless it's a new project that's, has some Spanish style to it or, uh, appropriate plaster, stucco-type, uh, finish.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to stick with the, the, a lot of the design elements that we already have downtown, that's for sure. Um, I even, you know, even some of our one stories still have a two-story facade that, um, I, I appreciate the, the look of today.
So this gets into some of the unique aspects of, uh, uh, some new things that have been coming to downtowns or even just commercial spaces, where there's some vacancies, whether it's the land itself is just open and you get some of these container shops and whatnot. Uh, some of you know Ed Gaither who's pretty active in town and I think even from way back at the first, uh, workshop, he was asking me about the container, um, um, shopping mall that's in Las Vegas at the far end of the old downtown area. And you see other examples, I don't think any of these are from that Vegas down, downtown shopping area, but. Um, and we did go over a little bit where some are slightly more, um, permanent installations, which are more of the upper-left area. Um, and actually the lower left as well, where it is on a, um, more permanent foundation. There's a little more permanent attachment, but the one thing with the containers, it can be still removed if for some reason, uh, the maintenance isn't working out or it needs to be full, uh, completely replaced, but these have been uh, pretty successful in a lot of areas, it's brought some unique attention to areas, cause you can have some small coffee shops or, um, uh, other retail that might be appropriate or seasonal. Um, and you can easily open and shutter the doors with the awning serving as a shade and then close down and, uh, um, secures the building at night. Um, so how did the three of you feel about? This became a little more of a container, uh, presentation, less about commercial entertainment and pop-up, but, um, how are you feeling about any of these, uh, uses and, uh, the potential for these in Taft?
I like all of it.
Yeah, I'm in favor of any kind of, um, any kind of pop-up stuff, I mean, even the temporary, whether it's a temporary pop-up inside an existing building.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, to, to drive, um, you know, the, the potential of people to look at it. Vacant lots, um, I've seen the ones like this with the containers, but I've also seen the ones with like the small tiny home kind of setups. I think a- any one of them, as long as they're maintained, um, and y- you know, if, if you're providing an opportunity for somebody to try out a new business, um, with as minimal amount of impact on their, their pocketbook as possible in terms of, uh, location and, and, uh, rent, things like that, I think those are great ideas. Especially because I think in small towns like Taft, that's the, what you need to do is you need to help people generate
Yeah.
um, opportunities for local businesses to, to, to start and thrive, I mean, that's, I think it was the history of this town, I think it's the future of the town is to find ways to, for people to develop local businesses again.
So one thing with this, i- and if it's bouncing around in your head whether or not, you know, I think more obviously we probably would have these kind of projects initially come to the planning commission just to get the property properly entitled, allow five containers, they'll give a general layout, maybe have some examples of what it looks like and um, we can have standards in place where you could get a more unique color, make sure the old, um, logos and names of the shipping companies are all long gone. It's now a structure, own it, put your colors and your designs on it. Again, put some unique, uh, signed standards on it, um, and, uh, encourage it, but also have them, in a sense, work with the five of you to, um, determine what some of those, uh, not boundaries, cause it still sounds limiting, but uh, design standards you're looking for and, uh, uh, good quality container type, uh, use. And then when we get into some pop-up, uh, 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 uses, um, that might be fading away a little bit with the pandemic, we'll see how it, uh, comes back up, but it's, uh, quick installations where somebody might have an outdoor, uh, setup for selling goods and uh, maybe quick food, uh, a, a farmer's market is a perfect example of a pop-up retail event, so. We could look more at just the big seasonal stuff or one at a time on some, uh, underutilized properties, uh, where maybe it's not quite, um, the appropriate direction to go with a permanent building just yet, maybe make it an experimental area where they have certain amount of space to, um, sell what they have, so. Um, we'll definitely incorporate this into the, um, specific plan, just to be ready for it if it ever comes to Taft. But we'll definitely work, continue to work on it over time with more of the pop-up, uh, situation, which is small-scale startup businesses and all that, which, uh, are definitely coming to the Central Valley, the Bakersfield area is really uh, bracing for, cause we are getting the influx from the LA, San Diego, San Francisco, Sacramento areas, and they wanna see this stuff uh, um, and these opportunities and o- uh, options as well, so we'll make sure we're, uh, we're as ready as we can be with the specific plan document. And as you ca- unique as all that commercial space was, it leads into a lot of the other items, particularly signage, gateways, markers. Uh, city's more in control of these banners here and we try to work with the other agencies for promoting, um, uh, whatever's going on in town, right now we're working with Taft College and there, we're more than welcome to let them take them over for the hundred-year anniversary, cause we wanna support the college and what they provide education-wise here. Um, and we do have, uh, maybe it's something I could bring back later, we do have a citywide uh, signage program that, uh, supports more of, it's not as unique as that, but some of these directional signs and, uh, um, directory boards, we didn't quite get to the directory level, but your basic wayfinding where you're driving down the street, you see the occasional sign that says Oil Worker Monument, Taft College, uh, City Hall, whatever it may be, so, um, uh, I could take any comments you have on, uh, particularly signage-wise when it comes to the downtown area. But I think, uh, maybe we, I can come back with, uh, showing the, um, wayfinding package that we pretty much adopted for Taft, but it kinda was paused like everything else with the pandemic, so that's something we could come back with, but any other comments you might have on, uh, signage, archways, whether it's private or public?
Uh, I, I, my, my thoughts are, we, we pretty much turn, turn that over to the ad hoc, or the actual.
Yes.
Economic Development Committee, and I think we, we leave that in their hands and if at some point it's complete and we feel like it needs to be incorporated into the downtown plan, that we should do so, but otherwise I would just leave it in their hands to maybe come back to the planning commission for a final adoption of the, the overall plan to be stuck into our.
Okay.
Uh, because it, it's more than just a downtown area, it, it really covers.
Citywide.
The citywide, so it would be something we probably wanna adopt into the city's general plan anyways. So at least my recommendation would be to be leaving with the ad hoc, but, keep saying ad hoc, we've said it so many times.
Yeah.
With the Economic Development Committee and, um, have them refer it back to us at a point where they feel like it's complete.
Okay.
Um, but yes, I think it'd be a good idea to let the planning commission see the, the work that's been done, the signs are nice, it's, you know, you've got some nice examples of it and I think it's worth seeing.
What I like about the whole plan is that it's very inviting for people to be outside and I think that, that's something we're, we're lacking here, obviously. I lived in Ojai for eight years and I had a, a business behind the arcade, if you're familiar with it, so they had the arcade and it was a very, it was a vital, um, downtown area. And it was just very inviting, you could go downtown, you could walk through the arcade. They had a back entrance to all the stores, so the stores in back, there was just a lot of very good flow, and then there was the park across the street. And it was, uh, it was a destination, it still is, still is, just to take a walk or take your bike or just to, um, enjoy yourself and your family, and I think that this is kind of leading to that, where it's all, um, moving together with the designs of the downtown building, the, um, the housing, the outside areas is just gonna create that.
I, I think too, as we get closer to this, the, um, CPAT had some recommendations for the city that were really not a planning, um, document material, they wouldn't go into the actual, uh, downtown plan, but were about programming for the downtown that would be worth bringing back as a separate discussion for the planning, um, for that to, to be discussed at least, uh, because you're right, I mean, they had some wonderful ideas about what you would do for programming things for the downtown area. And we could be looking into, how do we do that? You know, who's the proper, where's the proper location in, either in the city or other people for helping to do, to put something like that together, cause they're not really planning document material, but they're very good ideas. Um, some of it's planning like, uh, you know, doing the sale ideas over Center Street to put in some more shade if you're doing a project. Um, you know, an event or something like that, so. I think it's worth, worth bringing some of that back to, to look at what should go in the plan and what might be, um, what might be either handed off to the Economic Development Committee or some other group.
Definitely. So along with the signage and other temporary things, all things, uh, um, shade and lighting, you have some unique things, we're not necessarily adopting, adopting these things, but we were shown the options at different areas. Um, Ojai's and other areas have done for their, uh, public spaces. Upper-left, you have little flex in the asphalt that picks up the sun's rays and glows at night. Um, shade structures, I think we've kind of gone away from shade structures mostly because our summers can rarely tax materials, no matter what the material is. But, um, we've seen them in different play spaces or, um, you know, smaller-sized outa- outdoor auditorium areas. Um, I think some folks were, um, talking a lot about getting some of the smaller-scale pedestrian lighting, um, so it lights up the pathways, um, so it doesn't need to necessarily flood the space with light, but enough for people to feel safe while walking up and down our street or any new, um, newly-created spaces with new development. And then you have the really unique ones that have a sculpture or artwork, uh, aspect to, um, um, creating lighting or providing lighting in an area. Um, and then unique, not so solid shade structures here, but it has kind of a cheetah-spotted pattern to it, so. Um, it could be both a, uh, art piece, a shade structure, seating area and play area for kids, i- if you will, so. Um, and then your standard gazebo-type structure, this is quite a huge one here, but, um, uh, we merge, or, uh, 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 kinda combined this with some of the other comments, cause they, they all start feeding into one another and how do you get those uh, spaces to work together and not be separate, so. Um, so that's what we discussed there, and I think we have one last one, which is the actual public art. We have our own, um, this isn't our guy, but, um, other areas in the state and the country, they have some examples here. Um, I've been to Golden, Colorado, and they have a lot of western-themed, um, sculptures, just like our, um, oil workers at the monument, another oil town putting a mural on some of the side blank walls, I think we've discussed before. And I think, uh, the three of you and the other two gentlemen not here this evening, um, we're wanting to encourage the murals on the, those side blank walls, uh, on some of our downtown buildings. Um, it'll be, it'd be unique, how to get there, or most everybody likes it, cause there's always gonna be a, somebody who doesn't care for whatever the piece is or whatever it may be, but it always adds to each of the towns, uh, whenever you drive up and down the five or the ninety-nine and you got a little bit of something around the corner to add to that downtown and that building that's there, so. And even on the pavement markings where it, uh, probably from a distance that looks like tire tread, but I think that's actually a, uh, street network pattern of a city.
Mm-hmm.
It's kinda turned on edge and it, um, it's actually probably like, I don't know, Streets of Paris or something. So there's always something unique to add to an area just to create an Easter egg to search for or just that little extra element that makes that area that much more unique, so. Uh, is there any comments on? Uh, I know we were, one comment, I think we've commented before, we're wanting to get more of the planner artwork spaces on more intersections up and down Center Street.
Yeah.
Is there a, a, a push for that to get it as?
Sort of the oil field kind of thing.
Third and second.
All the way up if you can from second to tenth.
Yeah, seventh, eighth, yeah.
Um, the, the other thing is, I, I, I like the idea, I like these, um, if anybody's been to Rapid City, one of the fun things about Rapid City, South Dakota, is they call it the City of Presidents, cause it's, you know, near Mount Rushmore. Um, but in the process of doing that, they've actually have a, uh, the entire downtown is dotted with, uh, bronzes of every president.
Right.
Um.
Replace this guy with one of our presidents.
Y- y- you know, right, and, and you would, you would, you know, one of my favorites is they have William Howard Taft bent over with the hands behind his back and you finally realize it's him getting ready to throw out the first pitch, he was the first president to throw out the first pitch to the baseball game. Uh, or Calvin Coolidge with his big cowboy hat on. Um, a- and the other thing that I always liked is in San Diego, uh, a French artist, Nicky Des Saint Fall. Um, if you go to the, the Balboa Park, there's a whole bunch of just weird-looking monsters, um, made out of, uh, tiles and other things. And on a good weekend, you, there's kids crawling all over them. Um, and they're just fun, and it's, you know, it's both art and, uh, some, some fun things for kids to do. And I, I think that finding sort of that mix of something that represents the town, like the Rapid City Presidents or something that encourages kids to play, both are, I think, important things we could do, you know, obviously you wanna adopt something that's more related to our town, but in, in either case, I think, you know, finding things that, that encourage that would be good.
Uh, there's a.
Uh, there's a, I think in Rapid City, they, they have a wall dedicated
Our alley.
Artists and they go in, I think they clear it out every so often and just, hey, don't graffiti the town, come here, paint whatever you want. And then, you know, I don't know, I'd say in six months or a year, we're going to clear it and start over and do something new.
It's, it's a single alley in the middle of the downtown that goes nowhere.
Yeah.
And it's, it's terrific. I've been, you been to that?
I mean, if we can get some people to like, be like, hey, well, I'll donate my wall. You know, there are some good artists in town, they might do some really cool stuff, make murals, people will come take pictures. I don't know, just, I'm a fan of art.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson Livingston, I believe we talked about that a little bit where folks were saying, cause as I mentioned and people were, I think, talking about is, we always think of these side walls, but there are a number of cities that keep going around the corner and will do more down the alley. You can enter a building from the alley, why not put the artwork back there as well? You know, look at all four sides of the block and not just the street side and not just one blank side. So that's one thing we could do as well is encourage, uh, uh, some of this uniqueness and expression or whatever you want to call it to, um, not just be on this nice blank sidewall, but, um, look for some other unique aspects of it and some property owners that are okay with, uh, some unique art, um, completely related to the town or not, or people who just want to paint a mural of whatever, uh, to encourage ki- uh, that kind of, um, activity downtown would definitely make an area unique and, uh, fun. You know, it's, there's always, it needs, always needs to be an aspect of fun to an area to
Yeah.
Make it that more interesting and make you want to come back, right?
Well, and I mean, it might encourage people to not graffiti up somewhere else, be like, we made a spot for you.
Give them the space.
It's kind of like a skate park, no, skate here, skate there.
Yep.
Dedicated to you.
So that, that's actually the tenth panel that we went over. Um, so it was all these pieces, uh, we're, um, gleaning the information from the folks at the third workshop. Um, it's getting integrated into the document as we speak. Um, I'm looking at an initial draft and it's more of kind of bare bones, uh, framework and text and getting, you know, design, the text version of design standards. So we're working on all of this. There was a follow-up, uh, survey that was online. Hopefully people were able to see it and answer the questions. And it followed the questions that were on the document that I was initially showing you. Uh, these questions were turned into a, uh, online poll. I don't have the results just yet, cause that, uh, wrapped up, uh, right at the end of April. Um, so we'll be integrating that and tweaking and adjusting some of the, um, graphics and documents and how we present the final product, uh, based on the responses to that. And I mentioned in the middle of the presentation that, uh, um, I just came up with one more unique way of getting input and responses. Now, one, I'm going to open up to everyone in Taft, even though the polls down and there aren't too many other ways to really, um, I don't want to say not reach out, but I'm always available for any follow-up comments. Anybody who's watching this or watches it later, feel free to email me, my contact information's all over the city website. So we can take every little bit of information until I really give you guys kind of a all stop. But right now we're still in a, a time, uh, period to take on more comments and feedback. Um, I just got back from a conference Saturday through Tuesday and one of the sessions was about public engagement, but with kids. You know, we, we all work amongst ourselves on the adult level, but there's a lot of, uh, planners and urban designers that are, are looking for input from every source and it's their own children, other people's children. So I coincidentally just crossed paths with Mr. Pendergrass, who's with the, uh, Oil Tech Academy at the high school. He was at Sit and Sip this morning and I just returned from a conference where I had a session about kids. It's like oil tech kids, you know, we all, all of us have at one time reached out to them to help out. They've done cleanups on Center Street. So I'm going to work with him before the school, school year is up, um, to engage with the two sessions he has in the afternoon, sometime in the next three weeks, cause they're done, uh, early June. So just to get another, uh, perspective on it, cause I think one thing we've all talked about at one point or another is, uh, whether or not the kids, what do they think about downtown? You know, probably most times it's just going to a movie at the Fox. How many have been down there beyond the Christmas parade or, um, oil or auto parade? You know, how many times have they actually eaten down there, shopped with their family, whatever it may be, or zooming by on their bicycle or skateboard? So getting their feedback should be a really unique and fun. So, um, trying to reach out to, to as many Taftians as possible. So I'm going to, uh, reach over to, uh, Taft Union and work with Mr. Pendergrass and his kids there.
That sounds like a great idea.
Good idea, yeah.
Uh, a report back in June, cause like I said, I think they're done June second or third, so.
I think they'd be
Time is short.
Have some really good in, in, input on things, especially like the open space and, um, they might not be as enthused about houses, but something, you know, the public art, the, the lighting, all those kind of things. I think they'd be very likely to have thoughts on.
You've, you've encouraged me to give my daughter an assignment and come up with some things she'd like to see.
Okay.
Maybe I can, maybe I can report back next month.
Yeah. All this is in the staff, the digital staff report that's online, but if you want the graphics separate, just reach out to me and I can, uh, forward that off and you guys could print that out and have your own little, uh, workshop assignment there. All right, uh, any other comments before we move on to, uh, the next item this evening?
No, I, I really liked the art on the, the new grocery outlet. It's, it's fun, it's bright, it's, I walk by, we do the walking path quite a bit and it's just something cool to look at, so I'm, I'm a big fan.
Yeah, it, it adds a little something to the, the area. Okay, so then we're going to move on to item four. Uh, thank you, Mark. Uh, consideration, I don't have my glasses on. Consideration of canceling the regular planning commission meeting and holding a special meeting, special planning commission meeting in June, uh, this year. And, um, Mark, you're the guy to tell us about that.
Yes, uh, thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. Um, I think this happened last year. We do what we can to, uh, pre-schedule out all our meetings for the year, avoiding holidays and whatnot. Um, the request here is to, um, cancel the regularly scheduled meeting on June eighth and schedule a special meeting two weeks later on June twenty-second. Those are our two dates that immediately follow the city council meetings. And the main reason for the canceling of June eighth is more personal on my end, I apologize. Uh, I, I, I was even thinking if there was a way to remote in, but I think even that would be kind of pushing it. But the good, uh, part of it is that extra two weeks, I think we'll get two more weeks of refining this and meeting on the, uh, twenty-second, um, it gives us that two more weeks of, uh, getting somewhat of a more full draft, uh, document. Uh, one thing we haven't touched on in our public meetings just yet is there is the zoning code, um, amendment side of all of this. Granted, it's a little drier, cause it tend to be void of graphics and, uh, an example of what we're changing. Uh, but, uh, it gives us just that much more time. And by then more of the plan will be refined and will be in the environmental process where we'll be, you know, full speed ahead to the approval for you, or excuse me, public hearing. I'm not going to assume approval just yet. Uh, later in, probably August, September is kind of the schedule we're aiming for. So that's the overall request is, uh, a motion to, uh, cancel the regular planning commission meeting on June eighth, twenty twenty-two. Looks like I missed the two on one of the titles. And to hold a special planning commission meeting on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, then we're going to need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
Um, I would not be available on the twenty-second.
We will issue.
But, uh, I'll, uh, second it.
Thank you. Okay, we've had a motion in a second, we'll need a roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Doughton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes. Okay, passes on a three oh vote with two absent. Moving to item number five, we have our planning director report.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. So, uh, in the agenda, you, you'll see I have an item A, but quickly I'll, um, just rehash real quick that I mentioned that I was at a conferences this past weekend. Again, it ended just yesterday, so I'll, um, go through everything and probably have a, a broader director's report, um, in June about some of the things I went over. The one quick thing was working on engaging kids in the whole planning governmental processes. So, um, that's one thing I'll do with the specific plan. Now with, uh, this item A, I came across this article where, um, uh, the State Department of Education indicated that the overall public school enrollment dropped below six million kids. And we're not here to talk about the schools or any of this, this is all tying back to what we talked about last meeting was there is some form of population drop overall in the state. And I had mentioned to you that I thought sometime early this month, I'll have the, uh, State Department of Finance, uh, report on the estimate for the twenty twenty-one year population ending on December third, thirty-first, cause they tend to release it in early May. And I was hoping it would be after I presented this, but they did release at least the numbers. I haven't searched for the document yet, but I think it was yesterday or Monday.
Hmm.
It was another drop of a hundred and seventeen thousand people. Um, the two items are, uh, more related, or the two reasons are more related to, again, the high COVID deaths and then the non-COVID deaths still exceeding, uh, births in the state. So there is something about births, I'm not a big demographer, so I can't go through that whole, uh, analysis of it, but there is the general, uh, idea, and I'm sure we've all heard it, where the baby boomers had a lot of kids and all the generations sit so slightly less kids over time. So there's this kind of cone of, uh, uh, slower, uh, growth and particularly in California. Uh, but one thing is, uh, a combination of this and this doesn't, article doesn't discuss it, but I think a lot of us have plenty of examples of friends and family that have moved out of state. Um, there, it seems like there's a real wholesale effort of not acknowledging folks moving to other states. And actually I don't necessarily see that as a negative. You know, folks are to consider Arizona and Nashville and Boise, Idaho as options, I think it's great. Um, you'll have to ask those cities how they feel about people moving in. But, you know, there was a wholesale exodus from all those cities after our industrial age kind of went by the wayside sixty, seventies, eighties. So the, the reimagining, the rebirth of a lot of these towns that probably had whatever their industry was, um, were, um, were really thriving probably right after World War Two, but then tailed off. So, um, I don't see it as a negative, but there is some avoidance of, uh, what's really causing this. And yes, COVID does definitely had, um, one piece of this, but for the whole hundred and seventeen thousand. Um, and I don't think it's also the birth to death rates as well, but there's a piece of where people are lea- uh, leaving the state. There's a cost issue, we're in the middle of the inflation side, we're not going to get out to all the details, but I think this ties more into what we were discussing and seeing the trend of Taft, Taft's population, even the state's population. And, uh, but one thing we're seeing is us, we in the Central Valley are still one of those alternatives. The larger urbanized areas of the state are slowly but surely moving to the next of, uh, uh, affordable area, but we're also providing the, uh, slightly better amenities than maybe we did ten, twenty years ago, um, that have made it that much more attractive for folks to move here and it's not just about the, uh, cost. And so, um, Kern County, all the counties up and down the Central Valley are still gaining population, but it's urban areas of San Diego, LA, and, um, Sacramento, San Francisco Bay area that are incrementally losing population. So that's all this is about. You could read the rest of it about education and whatnot, cause even charter schools are a little bit down. So it's not just a public school thing either, so feel free to read through this. But, uh, um, there's a little bit of a downward trend we have going on, the population in the state. And to me, it's not absolutely the worst thing, we're still the biggest state in the country at thirty-nine plus million. Uh, maybe we're reaching a little bit of a ceiling or cap for the moment and see what the next, you know, iteration of our state is after this little drop, so. But for right now, we're kind of plateauing with, uh, population growth. And that's all this is about, um, it's no comment on the schools themselves, it's nothing about them for the drop in, uh, enrollment. It's just an overall population trend in this state. And that's all I had for the planning director's report.
Okay, so just in case, do we have a report from our city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. No.
Okay. Uh, in that case, we're now at the point where commissioners can make some comments if they want. Now, Mr. Doughton?
Uh, none at this time.
Okay.
I'd just like to remind everybody that tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer and Veterans Park, uh, tomorrow morning at six AM is going to be, uh, where people who want to will gather for prayer and then there'll be breakfast afterwards too, provided by Ruins, I believe, so.
And they will sell tickets on site from what I hear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for the, for the meal, okay. Um, I have no comments. So we're now at the point where I can volunteer to represent the planning commission at the city council meeting if we'd like.
Have my vote.
So, um, unless anybody else wants to do it, and that would be you at this point, so, okay. Then I will be doing that. We are now ready to adjourn, just need a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
I'll make a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 We're adjourned.
Thank you.